All right, it's time to get started for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and start with a roll call from Cindy.
Councilmember Cochran? Absent. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Hamrick?
Here.
Councilmember Haques?
Present.
Councilmember Meisner?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Here.
Mayor Troutman? Absent.
Okay, now we'll have our invocation. Ms. Gregg, can you go ahead and come up?
Let us pray. Creator God, we thank you for another day in which to serve you. As we gather this evening to do this important work, we pray that you would grant us all compassion, courage, and clarity to make the decisions that are best for all that are involved. And it's in his name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
May I pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, America, a sincere and public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's a football game tonight?
Yes, there is.
Well, thanks for making the effort to be here regardless. We do have citizens' requests to speak to council. Daryl Cool, would you like to go ahead and come up?
Yes, I am.
Come on up to the microphone. He'd like to talk to us about the crosswalks on Royal Gorge Boulevard.
The reason why I came here, I'm not real sure if it's a city's problem or the state highways' problem, but it's the crosswalks on Royal Gorge Boulevard. If it's the state highways, I won't bore you with my story. Just give me an idea of where I need to go, and I'll go see them fellows at the state highway. Is it a state highway or is it a city problem?
Well, it's both.
Okay.
And we're working on some solutions together, but tell us what you've got going on, and we'll go from there.
Okay. I'm not real good at hearing very good. Can you...so it is a city, I'm sorry?
It's both.
Okay, here I go then.
City and state, we're working together. So tell us what you...tell us your concerns, and we'll go from there.
Okay. My wife and I were going to a program at the museum on Sixth and Royal Gorge Boulevard, and it was on a Saturday afternoon, and we meant to several of them. We usually go early, so we get a good place to park because the parking lot is kind of small. But I invited some friends, and in the meantime, they was a little bit late, and we left a little bit late. And we had to park. I come down the Royal Gorge, and I looked in the parking lot, it looked full. Looked pretty full. So I thought, well heck, we'll just park on the other side of the street. Big old parking lot there. One or two cars in it, one more ain't gonna hurt nothing. So we pulled in there. I got to the corner to cross at the Sixth and Royal Gorge Boulevard. You couldn't cross. I mean, we stood there, and them people, I think if they hit us, they'd have kept on going. They wasn't gonna slow down. So I said, "Well, if we get hit by a car, we'll be in a crosswalk." My friend said, "There isn't any crosswalk. What are you talking about?" And I looked down, and sure enough, there wasn't any. So we darted across there, and we're senior citizens, and we don't run like we used to. I can't go as fast as I used to. But we got to the middle, and the other side come. There's two lanes. We crossed two lanes, and we got to the middle, to the white line, or the yellow line, I mean, I'm sorry. And man, them cars was in front of us and cars behind us, and nobody even cared, we was out there. They didn't even see us, I don't think. So we stood there, I don't know how long. It was...it wasn't real long, but it seemed like forever. We finally got across. I gave a sigh of relief. I thought, you know, I wanted to go to this program, but I pertinently killed my wife trying to get here. This is sad. This is sad. So we went into the program, and we sat there, and the whole time I was thinking, we gotta go back, cross that highway to get down the other side again. I enjoyed the program, it was a lot of fun, but man, I thought, how are we gonna do this? How are we gonna do this? And I will have to admit, it was a good program. That man, it was a Sand Creek massacre, and that was worth seeing. That was worth being there. And the building was full, they had standing room only. But anyway, get back to the crosswalks. He was finishing up on his...is that my time up?
It is your time up, but we do have some really good news for you. We have some really good news. We are also really concerned about pedestrians crossing Royal Gorge Highway, and we are in the process of working together with CDOT to make it safer for pedestrians to cross between First and 15th Streets on Royal Gorge Boulevard. When's the next open house for that?
Oh, I would have to double-check the open house. I don't recall off the top of my head.
Yeah, I couldn't find it on my calendar, but we just had an open house for the public to view it and give their feedback on those crosswalks. And we will have some more meetings in the future where you can participate in coming up with the best solutions that we can.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. You don't know how much I appreciate this. You know when them will be? They'll be posted, so we'll know.
Yes.
It will be either late January, early February.
Okay, okay.
But I appreciate your coming and telling your story, though, because that helps give validation that we really do need this, and the public is wanting that.
I'm not gonna miss it. I'll be there.
Okay.
I appreciate you for taking the time to listen to me, and I want to thank you, and thank you again for everything you do. I appreciate it.
Well, you have a good rest of the night. We're glad you came. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We do have a few more minutes left for open comment. If anyone from the audience wants to address city council, this is the right time to do it. If you do want to talk about something that is on the agenda, then you need to fill out one of these little forms and turn it in to our city clerk here to talk about the agenda All right, since we don't have any public comments, then we'll go to city council announcements. Jim, did you have something you wanted to announce? Your name's on my thing.
She must have pushed my button.
He's pushing my button already.
We can take announcements.
I had one of the workers call. That was probably from the other night.
You popped up pretty quick there. I was like, wow, you've really got a lot to say already, so...Councilman Hamrick?
So I just wanted to share that on December 11th, we're going to be having a general government meeting, and at that meeting, we're gonna be talking about Black Hills, and it is a public meeting, and if you have any interest in the subject of Black Hills, please show up. It'll be pretty interesting. We're gonna be hearing from some environmental consultants specifically about the Clark Station property, so this is not so much about the franchise, but about the Clark Station property.
Okay. Also, on Wednesday at 1:30 here at City Hall, we have our Built for Zero meeting, where we're gonna be talking about homelessness and a new program that...it's not a program, it's a methodology for addressing homelessness that we have a scholarship from Kaiser to be able to implement. That's here at City Hall, just 1:30 to 2:30. Anyone who has a concern about homelessness is welcome to attend and participate in that. And just also want to point out that from the state of Colorado, their Economic Development Department will be coming and having their meetings here in Canyon City, and so that we're really honored and glad to have them come and spend some time in Canyon City as well. I also want to congratulate Councilwoman Cochran. She had her baby girl. It was very exciting. And also congratulate Councilman Meisner and future Councilman-elect Mandy Reed and Brandon Smith and their successful elections this year as well.
Congratulations to you.
And Tim Dennehy as well, yeah. Any other announcements? Okay, then we will move to the consent agenda. I'll ask the city administrator if you can please review the consent agenda.
Mayor Pro Tem and members of council, item 7A is approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting on October 21st and November 4th, the special city council meeting on October 30th and November 4th, November 6th and November 7th, and the General Government Two Committee meeting that was held on October 16th. 7B is the appointment of Mike Madone, Jim Nelson, Jason Bruins, Terry Herro, and Rochelle Ryder to the newly-formed Historic Preservation Committee with Tim Payne and Cindy Norrell as alternates. 7C is change in title and job description for the Senior Accounting Technician to Accounting Technician for Payroll. 7D authorizes the acting city administrator to sign a contract for urban renewal consulting with Riker and Cunningham in the amount of $8,700. 7E declares and disposes of surplus electronic equipment. 7F is declare and donate surplus watch guard cameras to the Custer County Sheriff's Office. 7G is monthly budget summary, and 7H is to receive and file a list of bills.
Are there any additions or corrections from council members? Lisa, did you want to talk at all about the Historic Preservation? You're good? I would like to say thank you to those who applied to be on that and serve our community in that way.
Well, Mr. Meisner's looking the...I just had a couple of budget questions. Looking at the general fund revenues spreadsheet that we have table that we have under tab G, the first page of the spreadsheet, it shows Royal Gorge revenues year-to-date is $150,000. Is that a yearly payment? Is that why that's?
We receive a early payment, and then there's a final payment that typically comes in January after the books have been audited.
So does this reflect the final...the final payment gets applied to the previous year's books, then?
I believe that's correct. Yeah, and Tammy's shaking her head, yes.
Okay. Okay. I've got another one here, too, somewhere, I think. And it's probably a question for you, Ryan. The...I'm looking on page eight, the Park Improvement Fund revenues and expenditures. And I'm looking at campground fees that we have not collected any year-to-date, and is that...is...
That's the delay in the program.
It's a delay in the program.
Yep, so we're looking at implementing the campground fees for next season.
Okay. And then, just a quick question.
Your question.
On the page nine, on the 2A Street Construction Fund, shows that we spent $2.6 million out of our five, and we're...are we gonna be able to spend the substantial part of that between now and the end of the year, or...
We'll roll over for next year's...
Roll over for next year. And the...on page 10, meter water sales...
Well, actually, going back to the budget expenditures for 2A, we still have some of those bills coming in for 12th Street...
12th Street, yes.
Yes, and Forge.
Okay. Great, thank you. Then on the next page, meter watered sales, looks like we're down substantially this year, is that right, or is that a reflection?
Yeah, the metered water sales have been lagging behind.
Has been lagging behind. And so we may see a shortfall compared to what we forecast for the...
Compared to budget, yes.
To budget for this year.
Could be a shortfall.
And further down there, under expenditures, the first debt service under Water Administration shows that we...the total budget is $880,000. We've only spent $143,000 year-to-date, which is...I mean, that's a savings, but is that...we gonna see that us catch up with that eventually, or not?
Tammy is saying yes, and I believe some of that has to do with allocation and where it's currently being allocated, so it'll be, you know, fixed at year-end.
And one final question.
Mm-hmm.
On page 12, under expenditures for the Self-Insurance Fund, looks like we're doing pretty good as far as forecasting what we've been spending. Do we know of any large expenditures that might be coming up on the health insurance side?
We do have and track some of those possible large expenditures, and there could be some that hits this year or early next year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilman Meisner?
But it seems like that balance...that fund balance is dropping.
It is.
Now, I know we made some adjustments this year, or 2020 adjustments.
Correct.
And hopefully that will counter some of that decline?
That's correct, and that's how it's forecasting when we do the budget models. It is looking that we will stabilize it next year and hopefully have some growth going back into that fund balance.
Okay, on the budget figures, I keep asking this, and I keep getting reassured that we're okay, but I'm still showing that on total taxes, we're at 67%, at 75% of a consumed year, and you people keep telling me we're okay.
Compared to budget, we are still trending up. And in the administrator reports, I included October numbers as well, and we are above
Okay. Cash and other expenditures, I noticed the $7,100 ammunition bid or cost, was that a bidded item? Page six on your...
Of H. And I...no. Yeah, I don't know if we've bid ammunition before.
Is there somebody here that wouldn't know?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So typically what we do with ammunition, there is a state bid for ammunition, and all of our amounts that we bid have been off of the state bid, and I'll have it in front of me to...
So you're coming off the price agreement with the state?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the state bid, so...
In the future, if they acknowledge that that's off of a state price agreement, that kind of clarifies everything for everybody, because that takes care of the bid question. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And I have...well, Chief Harvey is up there. We also have the Omnigo software line item there on page five for $35,000. Is that a...that's our annual subscription fee, is that correct, for Omnigo?
Yes, sir. It's the annual subscription for the records management system, not the mobile platform.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Gonzalez?
This is more out of curiosity, but on the Urban Renewal Development, RFP, there was a huge...
Difference.
Range and difference in pricing? What was...what was the difference?
I think some of the bidders included legal representation as well...
Okay.
And legal advice, and we specifically mentioned in the RFP that we did not need that service, but they were cost out in their line items.
So that was...it was on legal fees?
Much of it was, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Meisner?
Just a comment, that I see a $9,200 expenditure under cash for this Ultra wood, which we talked about last meeting, which I think was one of my negative votes. But then I also, interesting enough, see a credit card purchase to the same company for $2,200, which would suggest, coming from a purchasing background, that that's split in a purchase, but it still appears to be the $11,000 that we talked about. Is that...is that...
Which page is that on, sir?
Well, on page two, the fourth line item for Altrue Wood, I guess that's how you say it, which is some of that wood that we were buying...
Correct.
Is $7,200, or $9,200. And then, interesting enough, on page three, under credit card purchases, fifth line, I show another purchase to the same company for $2,500. I just found that to be a little odd, as to why we would handle those two purchases like that.
Yeah, and I know we broke up the payment and purchase of those items. I would have to double-check with Rex to see why those...
Why would we break them up?
Why this specific one was...they were purchasing the supplies for the shelters from multiple vendors.
Right, but this is the same vendor.
Correct.
Here comes Tammy.
Oh, here comes Tammy.
I know one of the vendors required us to do a down payment, and so that could have been what it was.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Councilman Hamrick?
Hopefully this is my final one, but so on page seven, I see that we're buying $6,600 worth of cell phones. Is that cell phones or cellphone service?
Is this service, Tammy?
Verizon's in there twice.
Yeah. We'll have to double-check and get back to you on that, but I believe it's service.
So I have a general question from that specifically. Would the...and my general question is, do you know how many cell phones the city is paying for?
Yeah, we've got cell phones, and we also have tablets that have service as well. I don't know offhand the number, but we could get that for you.
Would you please? Thank you. What goes along with that is, again, I find it interesting that there's a...there's a cash expense for $6,500 for Verizon, and then there's a credit card expense for Verizon for $6,500. It gets...I get a little confused when I see the same company showing up in different areas in terms of what does that mean and why are we doing what we're doing?
Yeah, and we can get some clarification on that for you.
Any other questions or discussion from council members? Can I ask for a motion?
Ms. Mayor? Pro Tem-elect? What do we call you?
Just make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve. I have to get back to my page. The consent agenda for November 18th, 2019.
And the agenda.
And the agenda. I always forget.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote?
How about discussion?
Is there more discussion?
I just have concerns about the recording of a couple of my votes, which, for the most part, is meaningless, but it's very difficult to verify those in the timeframe that we have. I don't know how we fix that, but just information. Discussion.
Discussion noted. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Haques?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
We'll now have our administrator's report.
It's Mayor Pro Tem and members of council. We had a meeting with Mr. Portis, who attended the October 21st council meeting regarding drainage into his property off of Fourth Street. We've worked out a temporary solution, building a dirt berm on the property or on the curb. And we will eventually pave that with asphalt in the spring to make sure that it does not erode in the future.
Does that go all the way to the end of the block?
We...it was his property and several others going down...going down the block, yes. We have bid opening for the project at the police annex. That happens on November 14th, or happened on November 14th. We'll be evaluating those bids. Just a reminder that the board recognition dinner is Tuesday, December 10th. Please RSVP to Cindy by November 27th. We've applied for the rural...
Wait, can we pause?
Yep.
Can I get my RSVP now? Anybody else want to do that?
Put it on record.
Yeah, just...yeah. That is not cheating. I gotta get it done now or else I'll forget it. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
We've applied for the Rural Innovation Initiative. It's an economic development initiative to help improve the digital economy in rural communities. A lot of the work that we're doing with Tech Start, there were several agencies and stakeholders, both in the community and across the state, that emailed me and let me know that this was opening up. So we have a lot of support for our effort to...and, you know, it also is a testament of all the word of mouth of what's happening and, you know, all the rewards that have been won recently and what's going on in Canyon City. So that's...I think it's a great thing that's happening. Also, the Upper Arkansas Technology Sector Partnership received word that it's received a $20,000 grant from Colorado Department of Labor and Employment. We're currently working on a Department of Local Affairs grant for the comprehensive plan and the land use codes, the titles 16 and 17, to help pay for the changes to both of those titles. The 12th Street paving, paving was completed on...over the weekend. We're just working through the punch list right now. The street will remain closed while we work through the punch list. There's some handicap ramps and some concrete work that needs to be completed, but fully anticipate that 12th Street will be open by Thanksgiving. And then, as I mentioned earlier, preliminary sales tax numbers for October are in. We were up $62,000 over last October, and we're up $243,000 year-over-year, and we're up $71,000 compared to the budget for this year. And then, we also had the open house for the access control...oh, no, we had the one-on-one meetings for the access control plan last week, and we're addressing those issues and concerns that property owners and businesses have brought up, and we'll be working with those property owners, getting them some deliverables as well as we continue those discussions.
Okay, Councilmember Gonzalez, you have a question?
I have two. First one is on item one, what are we looking at in the spring to help that problem?
It'll be paving that berm. We'll actually be putting asphalt over the...
Oh, okay.
Over the top of it, so it doesn't erode.
Okay. And then my second question is, are we moving forward on the 2018 building code, implementing it?
We had our contractors' meeting a couple weeks ago, and that was the first open house discussion with contractors, and we are continuing to have some of those discussions. We're planning the next contractors' meeting in January.
Okay. How was the feedback?
There was, you know, it was very well-attended, and we got a lot of feedback, not just from builders, but we had appraisers and architects show up as well. I think, you know, some of the strong feedback was there's a lot of pushback to residential sprinkler systems, and then there were, you know, some concerns about what the energy code will do, but, you know, again, some of the feedback there was that there is a return on investment for the energy code, and that can make a house more marketable. So again, we'll be continuing to have those discussions. One of the activities that we're gonna be going through is actually looking at a set of house plans and what the difference in cost will be from the 2006 code to the 2018 code.
And what...and how necessary is that for our community? I'd like for that to be part of that discussion as well.
Sure.
Because...well, we'll just see how it rolls out.
Yeah, and, you know, there will be a lot of public opportunity for comment.
Okay. Thank you. In January, you said?
The next contractors' meeting will be in January.
Okay.
Councilmember Meisner?
How many contractors do we have there?
At the meeting? I don't know offhand, but we did have a sign-in sheet, and I can share that.
I'd like to see that.
It was a pretty good crowd. I was really pleased. The table's completely full. We had an extra row in the audience as well, and a lot of participation, a lot of comments, a lot of feedback was given, and really good...good feedback as well.
Would we say it was more than six, less than six?
Oh, I'd say like over 20.
Well, okay, you know, let's give some kind of a number, you know, even though it's not specific. He asked a question, so a number should always be given. But say, we felt there was at least 20 contractors here, so that everybody's aware of how many people are attending.
Yeah, I, you know, I would say attendance was over 20. I don't know what...how many were contractors versus, you know, other industries.
Councilmember Hamrick?
So my question is on the Dole...
So my question is on the DOLA grant for our comprehensive plan, and the... We're still the... On the title 16 and 17 part of that, even though that'll be part of the master plan grant, the... It's still our intention to use staff and our attorneys to do as much of that as we can.
Well, staff and attorneys, and what I heard from council was hiring outside help to help us get it done as quickly as possible. So, you know, there will be that aspect of it as well.
So the answer is yes, that we were looking for a vendor to help us with those two items also.
That's correct, yes.
So I had a question that goes along with that, too. What does titles 16 and 17 have to do with part of this master planning for the...
It's the land use code, and typically they get tied together. And actually, as part of DOLA's requirements, when you apply for master plan grants, they will typically have you at the very least review the land use code. But, you know, again, there might be opportunities for updating it as well. So this is an opportunity from a funding source to try and do both, and we can do both simultaneously as well.
Okay. And we'll also be putting it as a higher priority as well, the bicycle priority for that, for transportation on bikes?
Yeah, we can include transportation as part of the master plan.
Okay. Any other questions from council members?
Ryan made an interesting comment that I just want to clarify from my personal perspective, that I would prefer that Patrick be the driving force behind a change in 16 and 17 versus a vendor.
Yeah, we're not hiring a vendor to just come in and make changes. It's with staff, and even that process is a public process as well.
All right.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, then we're going to move on to a public hearing as item number nine on the agenda, consideration of application for hotel and restaurant liquor license for Unbridled Holdings on 505 Macon Street. And did you want to give that a report? That's coming from Cindy.
Unbridled Holdings completed all the required paperwork. They have everything in, and they are good to go. Everything's at the stake currently, and they're good to go on my side. They've got everything, exactly what we wanted in.
Okay. I see we have a representative from Bridle. Do you want to come and address council?
If you need to.
Yeah, come in. Yeah, we will be asking you some questions, so as well, can you tell us what's going on at 505 and your plans?
Of course. I'm Margot Benson with Unbridled. We are building an awesome banquet bar that looks historic within the building, using materials already within the building, Lincoln marble and wood, and working with Barry Dolan, and so that will be kind of like a really nice stable piece for the venue. And then the main lobby or the main floor will become a venue center with our apartments Fremont Center of the Arts, and it'll just be a nice gallery slash event center. We're working with them on how to change the display rack so they move around, and we'll do some AV setup. So really, the liquor license just helps us with the banquet bar. It won't be a full-service bar all the time, but when we have our catering company set up, we will bring liquor in and stock the bar just for the special events. So that's really... That's going to support on that part of the venue setup.
What's the timeframe for getting all the renovations started?
Yeah, so we've been working on the plans, and we actually start construction December 1st, and so we'll be pretty much finished by the end of January.
Awesome. Okay, is there a council member that wants to address about the liquor license? There's a list of questions in your packet. Go ahead, Councilman Meisner.
Okay. I was under the impression we weren't doing the standardized questions anymore.
Those are suggested questions for you to ask? You're not required to ask them? But your previous script was somewhat outside the bounds of what-
Right.
-your authority is here.
Well, while I'm finding my place there, you made a mention about the bar, or whatever you're going to call it, would only be working when the caterers came in. Who's staffing the bar?
Yeah, great question. So the event center is called Post Office Event Center. Official entity is obviously holding six. So when we have a caterer come in, we will stock the bar. We'll have the liquor purchased. It'll be held away from the bar and locked up. And then when we have an event booked and that client wants to serve liquor, then we will be responsible to serve the liquor. And so we'll have a event manager and then a licensed server for every event. It's 150 people, so we'll just need one server.
Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
Yes.
How will you ensure that your employees are trained on the liquor code?
Yes, so we'll require a copy of their permit and make sure they go through our training and our service standards.
Describe any relevant experience you have in operating an alcoholic business.
I manage a restaurant inside a historic property in Seattle, Washington. We actually went through a similar renovation project and built a bar. So I'm very familiar with the codes and, you know, the restrictions. And then, so my experience goes back at least 12 years with restaurant and hotel and service.
Are you currently employed in any... As a peace officer in any jurisdiction?
No.
You obviously paid the application fee.
Yes.
And how many employees do you actually expect to be serving alcohol?
We'll have an event manager who will be licensed, but then we'll have one specific server for events. So we'll contract that server.
Okay, Councilman Hamrick?
The application, which was filed in May, now six months later, says that at that time you did not have a copy of the Colorado Liquor Code. Do you have a copy now?
I do, yes.
And I have one other observation, that on the Colorado retail license application, somehow the box got checked. That is the applicant or manager under the age of 21, and the answer was yes. And I don't think that's what you meant.
No, that's a mistake. I mean, I'd love to be under 21, but I am not, and Stan Bullis is definitely not under 21. My apologies.
Any other questions or comments from council members? Then I'd like to close this public hearing and call for a motion in a second.
Trying to find a name here. I don't know if somebody else can jump on it. The name of what we're doing.
I'll do Councilmember Hamrick, please.
I move that we approve the new liquor license under the hotel and restaurant category for Unbridled Holdings, Six LLC, located at 505 Macon Street, Macon Avenue.
Second?
Have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing the changes.
Thank you. Yes. And I may add that Cindy has been an awesome support for applicants. I think she's really great presentation of like how you guys help people trying to start their businesses and get their applications. So thank you, Cindy. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you for that feedback. Yeah, congratulations. We always like to hear the positive feedback. And we're going to now move to agenda item number 10, consideration and adoption by title only of Resolution 25, Series of 2019, a resolution of the City Council of Canyon City, Colorado, summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget for the City of Canyon City, Colorado, for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January 2020 and ending on the last day of December 2020. I will... It says to turn it over to you, but I'm going to invite Tammy to come on up. I'm sure we'll have lots of questions for her as well.
Yeah, and then actually we'll have Tammy introduce the resolution.
Hand it right over to Tammy, okay. We'll start our discussion. Did you have any introduction that you want to give us before we start asking questions?
Nope.
Okay, then we'll turn it over to Councilmember Meisner.
My first question involves your cohort, sitting back there texting.
Which one?
It's really important.
Oh, I guess you've got two of them back there. But I'm back to the question I asked weeks ago. There's a expenditure that's mentioned for MTD replacements, which considering the age of those units and the discussions that we had last year, or at least when we initially approved the MTDs, I was under the impression we were going to build a fund to replace those over a five-year timeframe. But my specific question is, that money that's currently in the budget, is that for actual replacements, or is that going into a fund that we're going to build?
So technically, it could be used for both. It is listed as an expense item, and right now what we're finding out is that there are additional people inside the police department that could potentially need one. Specifically, we have investigators that are sharing MDT, Mobile Data Terminal, currently, and that actually was slated for someone in patrol. So there may be a need to actually replace some that weren't initially calculated for that. But what that's actually for is a five-year replacement cycle for the 24 MDTs that we currently have. So I'm not sure I'm answering your question, but it could technically be both.
Well, no, it is. But it can't be both, in my opinion. I mean, we talked about the fact that specifically we needed to fund an account to replace those at the end of their five-year cycle. And if we're going to fund that account and then draw out of that account, we're not going to meet the goal. So if we need to buy additional MTDs, we need to budget those and buy them, assuming you can get that approved. But we can't be taken out of that fund to add MTDs. That's for replacement. That's my opinion. I have more questions.
Well, I'm going to let them defer for a minute. It sounds like-
Looks like they're finagling. I mean, how much are we talking about to buy an MTD? 10 bucks?
That's actually what we were discussing, so.
The box. How much are we talking about for an MTD?
So, yeah, it's about $5,000 per unit.
I mean, we got to be able to find $5,000 somewhere in your budget to buy an MTD. I just don't want to use that money that we're setting aside for MTD replacements to buy additional MTDs.
Well, but if you think about it on this same scale, if we're purchasing them annually, then we essentially are replacing them annually.
That's one theory.
Right.
But we're not replacing, we're adding.
But are you retiring one when you purchase a new one?
No. No, not initially.
There you go.
But if it's an annual expense, and so, you know, I guess the way to look at this is we're not looking to simply say at the end of five years, we're just going to buy this large amount. It's just like vehicles. If we wait until that timeframe, there may be additional equipment that we could have purchased during that timeframe, or equipment that is obsolete at the end of that five years. And so essentially, at the end of the five years, we have this lapse of all of the computers that we have are out of date, and so there could be kind of a time period where we don't have them up and running. And so if we replace them over a period of time, then we have units that are still in the fleet, so to speak, that are constantly being replaced and updated, so we don't have to down the entire MDTs in order to image the machines and then get them out.
So how many... I'm sorry to impede on your questions, but how many MDTs do we... do you need in order to get up to the quantity that you need?
So right now, we have 32. One of those doesn't have a GPS. It was actually purchased with initial grant funds and didn't have the required equipment, and that's a good example. So we essentially would be replacing 32 over the five-year period.
In five years.
We have 38 officers that actually are in need of one. I currently have one as well, so I could take that out and put that back in the fleet, but essentially, we're down seven MDTs that we would need. So we can... What the plan was is to essentially budget this over a five-year replacement period, so that we would add one every year, but that way we weren't waiting until five years to do a large purchase and then have 39 machines that we have to then image and try and get out.
Councilman Hockes?
Well, you know, going along with what Mr. Meisner is saying here, what I'm thinking is, and let's think about giving it a try. Go ahead, and in your budget, budget for, I don't care whether it's 5, 10, or whatever the case may be, and it's already in your budget for that. Then if something should come up, where you're going to need more than what's there, then you can come back for an adjustment to the budget. But already, we have a set amount of dollars for a set amount of MTDs, okay? And that can always be changed if the need is there for three or four more. But it takes it where there's only one account for that, and then you have a separate account for whatever else goes along with replacement values and that.
Okay. Well, yeah, we'll set up a policy for replacement, and we set up a fund as well, and then any additional MDTs that need to be purchased, we'll work through that.
And if you just take the math of 38 times 5,000, 190,000 divided by five years is 38,000 a year we need to save, and understanding that the life cycle of an MTD is approximately five years, theoretically, aside from theft and damage, you should not have to expend anything in the first five years.
We shouldn't. The issue is not necessarily the expense of it, because you're right, we have them for five years, and they're covered under warranty for that five-year period. It's more the implementation of it out the other side. Instead of having this monumental implementation project, if we do it periodically, then... We're trying to do that with everything, every piece of equipment we have, including vehicles.
Well, yeah, we'll work administratively on a replacement policy.
An adding policy. We've already got a replacement policy. It's the additional MTDs that we need to work on.
Yeah, I think, you know, the adding policy, but to address the chief's concerns about replacing them all at once.
Well, they're all under five. I don't know how you're going to get away from that. I mean, you know, you're under a five-year program, and in five years, you're going to reevaluate the whole process and look at it, and there's a very high probability of coming back and say, hey, we need to update technology to this level. And you can't do it one thing at a time. We already know that that typically is going to happen. That's why we need the money in the bank.
So can I ask a question real quick? We bought these last year, right?
Yes.
These were purchased last year?
Mm-hmm.
And do you remember what the purchase price was of the 32 that were purchased?
We got a grant of it.
Yeah.
I don't remember the exact amount, what the... But it included a bunch of different things. The grant amount was $205,800, but that included some software as well. And just from memory, I want to say it was right around $130,000 is what we ended up spending for the MDTs.
Well, and don't you anticipate there's going to be a price increase in the five years between now and then to replace those? So his concern is that he's putting out a ton of money in five years. That's a lot. That's a lot of money.
Well, it allows us, if we look at it, the ability to purchase them incrementally throughout the five-year period, as opposed to a mass purchase in five years.
At one time.
Because if we budget $40,000, and to your point, if there's a 10% increase that we could have saved 10% by purchasing them over a period of time, the five-year lifespan doesn't change, whether we buy them today, tomorrow, or next year, that five-year lifespan is still there. And so essentially, what we're doing is we're creating a replacement plan, so that at the end of the five-year period, it's not just they're all gone, and we, you know, we budgeted $40,000 because they were $5,000 at the time. Now they're $5,800. It allows us some flexibility to be able to modify that over the five-year period, as opposed to trying to forecast what price increases are going to be in five years and the overall implementation. But we absolutely can address your concern, so that we separate out the increase and the replacement cycle. I just, you know, want to put it out there, too, that we're trying to be thoughtful with how we're replacing these, so it's not an overburden on staff, IT specifically, to get those out. And then also, we're trying to accommodate for annual- And then also, we're trying to accommodate for annual price fluctuations.
Well, and the older MDTs will be the ones that'll be getting retired, and the newer ones will be up to date with the newer technology.
So essentially, Councilman Meisner, what would happen is, is that those in the five-year period as we are on a replacement cycle, instead of saying, "Okay, well, this five years, we've got the money." And I understand and appreciate what you're saying is we need to make sure that we're doing this and we're replacing it. What this does is it makes it more manageable so that we don't, in five years, not have the money or not have... Because if we come back and we can't appropriate that amount, that additional amount for the increased expenditures, then we don't have a program, or we have people that don't get them. So as we progressively throughout the five-year period say, "Okay, this is what we need to do to replace those," they get imaged, they get put into the fleet. Then we are creating a replacement cycle that at the five-year mark, you're exactly right, we still have four years' worth of machines that have a five-year lifespan left. So we're not having to say, "Okay, well, we can't afford, you know, 39 machines this year because we have 32 that are still within a five-year life cycle. We're creating the life cycle now."
But then when you're purchasing the new machines, you've still got a five-year warranty.
Absolutely.
So you're...
That doesn't change.
They're still up to date in the newest technology.
You know, we may not have gotten the full five-year warranty out of one machine, but it ensures that there's five-year warranty on it, no matter what.
Correct.
All right, another comment from Councilman Meisner.
Well, I'll buy that theory if you're talking about water meters for Bob. I'm serious, in terms of a mechanical apparatus. And that's not truly mechanical. But tell me what you're going to do in three years with an MTD.
I'm not sure what your question is, because we would do the exact same thing.
Well, three years from now, what are you going to do with... What's your intention to do in the 2022 budget with MTDs? How many are you going to replace?
The exact same...
And what are you going to do with those ones that you're replacing?
The exact same number that we're planning for this year. Because essentially, just like you said, breaking down the total number that we need on a five-year replacement cycle, we're looking at replacing those every year throughout the five-year period. So in other words, on the sixth year, we're not spending $198,000. We're spending $40,000.
So based on that plan, you can never afford to change MTD providers and software?
Actually, it's the opposite. So every year, we could look at potentially changing that because technology, truthfully, even though they have a five-year life cycle, their technology is generally outdated in two years. And so if we only did it in five years, we are so woefully behind that it would potentially cost even more. So it allows us more flexibility to look at it on an annual purchase basis.
And none of that software is proprietary?
Well, it's all proprietary, but it allows us...
So then you can't take that software from MTD 1 and put it on MTD 2 from a different supplier if it's proprietary?
Correct. But that's why in the budget, we also plan for Microsoft Word, for example, licenses or whatever has to go on there. I'm sorry?
Microsoft Word's a universal software.
It is, but there's still a licensing fee that goes along with it.
Okay, I'm done with that question.
I'd just like to comment that the problem is, is that we had to get started. And we had to get... We decided to go with MDTs, and so we bought all the MDTs that essentially we needed.
Right.
Now, the issue is, is that if we wait until year five to replace them all at once, all of a sudden, we're sticking a knife in our poor IT department as well as foregoing the options of year by year, upgrading software, upgrading electronics. And so it's a... It's a factor of, or a result of what we did, which was buy a bunch of machines to start with. The right way to do this, if there's a right way, would be to buy, you know, 10 a year or something like that. But we couldn't wait. We needed to buy them, and so we did. And now we're trying to work into a replacement cycle.
Any other comments on the budget and questions? I'm sure there must be more. Are you still...
Sure. I'm done with the police department, I think. There's an excess specialty fund? I'm not sure I understand what that is.
That is the one that has $15,000 budgeted, is that correct?
Yeah, it hasn't got a whole lot in it, but...
Yeah. The excess special improvement fund?
Pardon?
I think it's excess special improvement fund. Is that what it's called?
What's that for?
Basically...
For MTDs?
No, no, it is not. That fund basically just has a transfer that we do every year to the general fund. And it was the excess from the special improvement, so... Yeah. There's really no departmental expenses that go in, in there. There's the only revenue that comes in is interest earnings.
Well, it looks like you're projecting a $15,000 extra... It's not an expense, but a transfer, apparently.
Right, we transfer that to general fund every year.
How can you transfer $15,000 more than is left there?
There's actually reserves in that fund. And so it is basically the interest earnings over the past years and excess funds that are in there that we transfer into general fund.
Next question. Is typically the property taxes hovers around the $400,000 range?
Yes.
And I think as Councilman, or excuse me, Mayor Protem Smith could help verify that we've kind of looked at property tax going to streets because that's always been about $400,000. And I see that you're projecting it at $438,000. What are you going to do with that extra $38,000?
It is all in, just as a function of general fund. And so whatever departments that we have that needs the funding is where that will go.
Did we make a commitment to take property tax to keep that towards average street maintenance?
We made a commitment to $400,000 every year.
Just the $400,000?
Mm-hmm, just that.
Which probably needs to be raised with...
Well, I mean, it should be... It should be relative to property tax.
And all of that would... We can make that change on our funding where it shows where, how the departments are funded. We can show that the property tax are more, going more towards streets.
I guess I did have another question for the chief. But I noticed the traffic finds it like dipped. They didn't dip, they've taken a huge dive. Are you getting soft on us, or what's going on there?
You know, I think we've really tried...
From what I'm seeing, it's not changing.
Yeah, and, you know, it's never an easy thing, but as you know, we don't write tickets for revenue streams. We do correct behavior. And so we've really tried to identify the areas that citizens have concerns with in our top five accident locations and focus those. But I will say, the new motor unit has more time to be able to focus on those areas. And so you should see... But I want to be clear, we're not writing tickets for revenue. We are writing tickets to change behavior. But a dedicated motor unit will have more time to address citizens' concerns, which will reflect exactly what you're asking there.
And as the... Without digging into the right page, is the 2020 budget reflective of that decrease? Are we still...
Yes, it is. It is based on how we have been trending.
Okay, that substantial decrease.
Yes, it is.
Just generally, how much... This is... You're done.
No, before he leaves. Before he leaves. I'm going to credit why the deal is down, the jobs your officers are doing with explanations on traffic stops and stuff like that. That's a good sign, okay? Especially the fact that we're not using that for revenue. That's a good sign that says they're doing their job. They're informing the public of things like that. You can lower violations with a traffic stop and a good explanation as to why it's being made and get some common sense into some of the people out there, okay? And that sometimes is more powerful than a ticket. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Just generally, how much carryover funds are there from... Do you anticipate from this year to next year?
We were...
I mean, how much money are we going to actually carry over of the total budget?
Total, as in all funds or just general?
If you look at the 2019 budget, and then we have what we consumed out of that budget... I'm going to say consume, that's not a good word. But we consumed X amount of dollars out of that budget. How much of that budget is going to be what we always talk about in this, carryover and re-appropriated?
In general fund alone, we were anticipating... Our budget was $18.5 million, and we are anticipating spending $14.8. So there's nearly $4 million that we will be having go back in to reserves and being re-appropriated.
And this gets, I guess, I hate to say tricky math, but that $4 million is not an income, is that correct?
That is correct.
Correct.
That is correct.
So does that give you $4 million in spendable money?
Not necessarily. Because if the funds are... If, let's say, we had a project, for instance, the police department, where we had $200,000 budgeted and we're not spending it this year in 2019, but we're going to spend it in 2020 or other projects like that, just because we didn't spend it in '19 means we're going to go ahead and put it in the 2020 budget. So we can't use that for something else. But if it were office supplies and we didn't spend all of our office supply budget, that money can be used for something else. But if it was a capital item that has not been completed and needs to be completed, it is just reallocated to that again in the next year.
I find it interesting with that explanation, when that same explanation has not been adhered to specifically relative to some road projects, where it's been explained to us time and time again, and Mayor Protem Smith can hopefully attest to this, that that money is not available the next year unless we covey-hole it. And the history of the city is to not do that. So now, all of a sudden, I'm hearing something different.
It's going to depend. If your project is actually in place and moving forward, then that money is going to be reallocated the next year to complete that project. If council... If there were a project that was approved in the budget, but then it wasn't completed, whether it was because we couldn't get bids, it was too high, or the priorities of council and the community changed, then those funds wouldn't necessarily be reallocated for that. That would go back into the reserves.
So I think maybe part of the message that Councilman Meisner is maybe giving to you as a new Director of Finance is that there's particular departments or capital outlays that we do want to be saved and save up for. And that is, in particular, the ditch crossings, replacing ditch crossings.
Why any of those?
Because we can never replace a ditch crossing for $200,000 a year. It needs to be accumulated so that we can afford to do it. And so that's probably our biggest pet peeve on that one. Is that... Am I correct on that? And so now you know that's something we're going to be watching very closely.
No problem.
And we do have some ditch crossings that do need to be replaced in 2020 or 2021. So we definitely need to have that money protected.
Or Ninth Street. Ninth Street's another example that we just don't have the money in. It has to be accumulated, which I thought we were doing the MTDs, but we're not going to do that either.
With good cause. Okay, I have a couple of questions, unless council has some that they would like to ask first. One of them, as I noticed in the downtown improvements, there was no money budgeted for 2020. But I do have a small concern. It's probably not a big-ticket item, but there are... The lights on the trees downtown are all broken from the trees growing. And a lot of the plants in the extended sidewalks have died and need to be replaced. Is there money set aside for that?
For the lights, we're actually trying to get that done this year.
Okay. What about the vegetation?
We'll have to look at the vegetation. Part of the problem with the vegetation is some of the ice melt that's being used is making that dirt very hard to grow in.
So we need to analyze it, because that's an important part of that investment downtown, is having that beautification. Another one is, where did we decide to get the money to pay for the major overhaul of Title 16 and 17?
We had some budgeted already for the comprehensive plan. We have some money from the Macon Plaza improvements set aside for that.
That's basically it.
Yeah, and those are the two sources that we've looked at for that.
About how much are you... Did you set aside?
Tammy, can you remind me?
We still left it at the $100,000. We left the $100,000 in there for that plan.
For 16 and 17. But that, I think we can adjust that with knowing that we have the grant sources available to offset some of that cost.
Is there some money set aside for economic development incentives? For example, we've... Were able to do some incentives for Holiday Inn and Starbucks. There's other possibilities for development coming into town that might need to have some gaps filled. Do we have some funds available for that?
So we continued with the life safety grants and the facade improvement grants. Both of those dollars are still in there. We've not in the past budgeted for economic development incentives. Usually, those are reimbursements of revenue. So they pay the use tax, and then they get reimbursed upon completion of the project.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we have that still as a priority for the budget. Another one I noticed on several of the categories, Tammy, that appeared to be deficiencies of revenues per projected spending. And I was a little bit curious about that.
And which... What are you talking about specifically?
There's several line items. Excess or deficiency of revenues and other sources, over-under expenditures and other uses.
So for example, one of them would be the park improvement.
What page?
That's not numbered.
I know, okay. So basically, where you're showing on the park improvement, where it has the deficiency of revenues over expenditures, right now, they're budgeted at... Their expenses are $75,600 above the revenues.
So there's a number of departments that have that, and I just really don't feel comfortable budgeting above the revenues.
And part of those funds are... The excess is being used towards... What's causing that deficiency is using it towards our capital items. They're not covered in our general revenues that are coming in. So with the parks improvement fund, we have $96,000 in capital, and essentially, $75,600 of that is coming from our reserves. We are still maintaining the level that we need to have on hand based on the council's direction.
Well, so we have money coming out of reserves for the park. We have money coming out of the reserves for the conservation trust. We have money coming out of the reserves for the museum donation fund and others as well. And I am a little worried because the projection of the economy in the coming years is not particularly great. And I would really feel more comfortable having a better protected reserves for those downturns.
On the museum fund in particular, we have received donations in the past to be used for specific items. And so that $52,000 that is going to be transferred out is as our cash match for the red house rehabilitation. And so we can only spend what is in that fund, and we can't really use it for anything other than what they were donated for.
What about the water budget that says it's $582,000 in excess of revenues?
Correct. And that's essentially the same thing, where our normal operating revenues do not cover our operating expenses and our capital expenses. And that budget is based on what the 2019 revenues are. And when we discuss the rates, then we, you know, we do have some information available that can help you with...
To help with that?
Yes. And that's why it's important to have those increases. And on con... And on Conservation Trust, those funds come in from the Colorado, the proceeds of the Colorado Lottery, and we can only use that for park equipment and park projects. And so if we have, there's years where we get more revenue and we have less expenditures, and so we let those funds stay there. And then the next year, we may spend more than, more than we receive in because we're drawing down on, on those reserves. And that's, those don't have normal operating, that doesn't have normal operating expenses and it's primarily for capital items.
All right. Well, I just wanna repeat that I don't feel comfortable digging into our, our savings funds.
And, and again, you know, typically when we're doing capital projects, that's where it comes from. It comes from, from the savings. So, you know, if we wanna cut out capital
Is it capital funds that we were saving up for, for that purpose?
Yeah, they, they could be, you know, council priorities or council projects. You know, I, I think, you know, some of it goes back to, you know, improving quality of life and, you know, doing the thing, you know, building streets and things like that. Those, those things end up as, as capital projects as well.
And then maybe I'll, maybe introduce to you, Councilman Turner, do you, do you wanna talk about the investment priorities for the trails at the Royal Gorge Park? And the horses? Would this be a good time to talk about that?
Sure, I mean, we can.
Just asking. We, we, we have a forty thousand dollar expense projected for the trail going up
Tunnel Drive to the Royal Gorge.
Tunnel Drive.
Yep.
What happened to the horse trail project that I thought we committed to and were working on a year ago in, at the park? To, to address the horse, to give the horse riders, uh, not an exclusive trail, but a trail specifically intended for their use?
Yeah.
What happened to that project?
That, that is still going forward. That's, you know, one project that a trail builder will be working on next year.
And that's in the budget?
It is in the budget, yes.
Well, I, Rex Brady told me that wasn't scheduled until 2021.
I'll have to talk to Rex because I, I think we've got our lines crossed there.
Because the, the concern came from Councilmember Turner because she was up at the trails and the horses are on the regular trails and they are getting damaged. And so we feel like that is a pretty big priority to make sure that we get the horses off of those trails and onto a better, one that's suitable for them and has that, a better partnership with the user groups.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll just share my concern. I've been out on the South Canyon Trails and up at the gorge in the past couple of weeks 'cause we've been lucky to have nice weather on the weekends. And it's clear that folks are riding their horses on the trails up there when they're wet and it's causing huge divots and a lot of damage to the trails. So my, my number one concern is that if folks are gonna be using those trails, that they're using them responsibly. And responsible use includes not riding bikes or taking horses on a wet trail because it does cause damage and ruts when the ground dries then, which makes them unusable and unpleasant for everyone. So that's, that would be my number one concern, is that people are, are using the trails we already have responsibly. And if we have user groups that aren't committed to that and you, and encouraging their members to do the same, I'm not sure it's valuable for, or useful for us to invest more money in that, in trails that we're gonna have to keep repairing because they're not used responsibly.
We do have contact information for the horse u, user group. Maybe we can talk about reaching out to them, 'cause they did make a commitment that they would help with mediation and, and work on the trails. And maybe we need to talk to them about their education as well.
Absolutely. And Tammy, the forty thousand for the trails, did we determine that was, to go from Tunnel Drive to the Royal Gorge Bridge, did we determine that was a little bit more than we, what we were expecting?
On the bridge repair?
No, the, the trail connection from Tunnel Drive to
Right. That one is, that one is the forty, that one I think is the forty, forty thousand.
Well, doesn't that include trestles too?
No, we have, that's a different, a different project.
Forty is for the, for the trail.
That one could be, is that one the twenty thousand? 'Cause I know we do have a twenty thousand, a twenty thousand dollar trail project and a forty thousand dollar
Trestle project?
Trestle.
Yeah, I, I think the trail connection to Tunnel Drive to the bridge is actually a twenty thousand dollar project. I think it was misprinted in the original, in the original budget.
Oh, we also got an email saying it wasn't, that forty wasn't just for that trail, it was for other trails too. Any other comments on the budget from council?
I just, I just wanna clarify that, that we're talking about the horse trail being a priority in all of the trail systems. And if we have to sacrifice, I would suggest sacrificing the trail that we're building on BLM land, that's only gonna be used four months a year. That's where I'm at.
Okay.
Any other input from council? Are we ready to adopt our budget for 2020? I'd like to welcome a motion.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Mm-hmm.
Make a motion that we adopt Resolution 25 Series of 2019 as the 2020 budget as presented.
I'll do second.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Meisner?
I'll just reiterate on page four, under cultural and recreational improvement, our investments, you specifically have Tunnel Drive slash RGP trail connection at forty thousand dollars.
And that was, that was a typo and we fixed it to the twenty thousand. 'Cause if you look in the printed document for the, the actual budget that was pres, that was given to council in October, in the capital improvement plan, it does list it out at, I think, the twenty thousand.
Are we ready for a vote? I'll call a vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Do we get one or two readings on this? One?
This resolution's one.
Resolution's one.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
And before we go to the next discussion on Resolution 25, it does have to do with a number of people in the audience who came in a little bit late. And if you have a desire to talk to city council, I need you to fill out this form and come and bring it up to our clerk right here. So if anyone wishes to speak to council, this is a good time to do that. I also wanna recognize, we have a group of high school students, Peter Benfretto. So we haven't met, we've, we've been communicating online. And I just wanna recognize that these are some high school students who are doing a public policy project at school, and so they're here on school assignment. They're on Accord, and they are, their project is about homelessness. And so I want you to look to the, the fine lady next to you, and she is an expert on homelessness. If you have an opportunity, if you haven't already met, awesome. So I wanted to make sure you guys connected too before we got started.
So I, I have a question, are they grading us or are we grading them? Probably get an F tonight.
Well, they're probably gonna tell us how we can solve all of our problems by the time they're done. That's my hope, yeah. So we'll have opportunities, and I would like to invite you guys to address city council as well if you wish to. That could be an excellent part of your project that you can talk about. We'd welcome that very much. City Administrator, can we go ahead and have you introduce the next Resolution 25 Series of 2019? This is a resolution of the City Council of Canyon City, Colorado, summer, oh, it's twenty-four, 2019. And this is amending the Chapter nine point two-two and repealing Chapter ten point oh-six concerning obstruction of public places. And I think we'll probably also need to have Police Chief Harvey come up and address city council as well.
I just wanted to clarify, we're talking about ordinance and not Resolution 25?
Yes.
We're talking about ordinance amending Chapter, yeah, Title nine, Chapter twenty-two.
And this is the second reading. Can you give us some background?
Yeah, this is repealing and reenacting in, in relation to loitering laws. And a lot of this came out of the decision that came out of Grand Junction. And Derek, do you have anything that you'd like to add to that?
So I, I don't wanna speak for the city attorney, but I think this is a more legally defensible ordinance to where we have a mechanism for individuals who want to panhandle and can do that safely. The loitering ordinance specifically would prohibit any, any person from being essentially between the sidewalk and in the street way, which could cause traffic and public safety problems. It also further clarifies that if somebody's gonna be obstructing a, a sidewalk and not allowing pedestrians to pass, that they would not be allowed to do that. But for panhandling, there is specifically a permitting process within the city that would allow them to do that legally and at intersections where we don't have safety concerns.
I'm gonna have to clarify that a little bit. So you, you do have an ordinance that deals with solicitors and door-to-door canvassers and things like that. You do not have a panhandling permitting process. So we don't have anything like that. This is really just a public safety obstruction ordinance. Currently, your, the way that loitering is defined under your code is too broad to legally defend. It means anything from like hanging out to just, you know, standing around and, and, and those are protected activities. And so this really narrows down what's not permitted, and it's really obstructing a public place by use of the public, whether it's a sidewalk or, you know, it is, if like, for, this has a special provision regarding like cleaning up in the park, and if staff ask them, you know, can you move from the bench so I can clean the bench or whatever, and that kind of obstruction. So it's much more narrow. It, it's been a little while since you talked about this, so just to remind everybody, we added in that paragraph subsection E, and that mirrors the language that's in the urban camping ordinance, which you'll discuss next. But that was council's request to amend this ordinance.
What, what did we add?
E. E, I'm sorry.
Well, that's right, we took it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so now it's in both?
Right.
So it just gave a little bit more options for the officers to have, to use in working with the obstructors.
Well, I think you wanted to, and I don't wanna speak for you, but my understanding was you wanted to have that avenue to have that discussion with maybe getting someone services, and it was in the camping ordinance, and so I think you felt it should be here as well.
'Cause that's the ultimate goal, right, is to give them the services they need. So we have Councilman Hammack.
So I just have a question, and perhaps for you, which is under the affirmative defense, that operating at C, once, D one C, operating or patronizing a commercial establishment or vending cart carrying out other activities pursuant to a license permit or other authorization. And my, my question is just what, what would another authorization be that would be a, an affirmative defense here if someone knows?
Well, basically, anytime you have permission to occupy the public place, that's what that covers. And so I, I can't give you a specific example as to what other authorization would be, but anytime, it's meant to be broad. If you have the city's permission to be in the public way, this doesn't apply to you. I, you can't.
So just to, and that's part of the reason why I was bringing up some of the other pieces there, and I appreciate the clarification on that. But the, the most common things that we run into is somebody exercising free speech, which they would be carrying picket lines or something along those lines. All that stuff would be protected and would be under the authorization, authorization of the city. We do have some people who are panhandlers, and what I understand is that if those persons are actually panhandling, they would have to have a business class B license. Am I correct in that, Ms. Foster? So that would be another permitted use. And one of the things I'm seeing nationally with, specifically with people who are panhandling in a public right of way is that it is very lucrative in some circumstances, and so there may be some sort of taxation that would be required there or other considerations that we would, we would need to look at. And so that's why I'd mention the authorization piece from some sort of permitting process. But are, are we talking about both loitering and camping, or are we gonna talk about camping?
We're just doing obstruction of public places.
So those are the examples that come to mind right away. And obviously, those are protected instances where we would make sure they had, see permission to be able to do those.
Let me clarify. Permitting, I misunderstood. Permitting is for the, the door-to-door, not in the, in the public right of way.
So do we not have a process specifically for panhandling? So that's something that we would need to potentially look at.
I apologize, I misunderstood what you were saying.
Oh, okay.
It's just the George door cameras that we have.
Gotcha.
Do you have a question for Chief Harvey?
I got a question for the chief. So
Hopefully I have an answer.
Assuming that this routed through you with the change that we made, which was intended to help the situation, is this workable for you and your staff?
Absolutely.
I mean, is it providing us, I hate to say this, but, I mean, it's providing somewhat of a solution to some of your issues?
It, it does. Specifically with some of the issues that we've had, specific citizen complaints about, and also some of the complaints internally with, with parks and rec not being able to carry out some of their functions. So this addresses specifically some of those concerns.
Okay.
Do you, do you wish to speak now, or do you wanna wait for the camping ordinance?
Um, I, I can wait for camping.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from city council? The only comment I have is that I did do a course, a ride along with the corresponders, and they did ask to have a little bit more teeth to be able to use, to be able to do their job, to actually help the behaviors at the park. And this isn't criminalizing homelessness, this is criminalizing criminal behavior that's happening at the parks. And we have a lot of really, really concerned citizens with some of the behaviors that have been at the parks. And it's also a tool that, and this goes the same for the camping, that those officers, if they're repeat offenders, it gives the judge a record to show some folks might need to be ordered to get the services that they need. It's, it's, in the end, it's a help, and we need to be able to be sure that we work together as the police officers and corresponders, and work together with our other stakeholders with homelessness to make sure that they are getting those wraparound services that they need.
I really appreciate you bringing that up, Mayor Pro Tim Smith, because the, it definitely has to be a two-pronged approach for us to be successful because there are definitely social determinants that cause homelessness, and folks who are experiencing that need help to get back on their feet. And we would be doing a disservice if we didn't have programs like the Co-Responder Program that partners with our organizations in the city to help those folks get back on their feet. And we actually had an individual, I can't tell you who he is, but someone that was very well-known in the community and constantly got calls and complaints, who was dealing with an addiction issue, that we got into a long-term treatment facility in Denver. And that individual has, it's a two-year program, it's very hard to get in there. And he is very grateful to both officers who have been up, up to Denver to check on him and see what his progress has been. So we are absolutely trying to look at this as a two-pronged approach. And those folks who are not obeying the law, we're gonna address those individuals too, but through the, the lens of how can we help them address some of the issues that might be leading to something beyond their control.
Awesome, thank you. And we have comments from Councilman Hockes, please.
Mayor, members, council, all of them made a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty-four.
We approve ordinance number twenty-four Series of 2019 as amended.
Do you have a second? Okay, call to vote?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Before I say that, I thought it was nine point two-two.
Yeah, but it's, we're doing ordinance twenty-four.
Never mind. Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes? Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna move on to the second reading and adoption of ordinance twenty-five Series of 2019. This is an ordinance amending Chapter nine point two-two and Section nine point four, four point zero six zero of the municipal code concerning camping on public property and use of the structure within Veterans Park. So
Again, I'll ask the chief to come up and
Did you want to take public comment first, or you want me to give an overview?
Why don't you give us an overview first?
So in consultation with the city attorney, we've been having several conversations about issues that we've been hav- that we've been having in the park with individuals that are trying to go around our existing ordinances, setting up campsites either before, after what our, our existing ordinance prohibited. And then unfortunately, they would kind of lean over and get unnoticed because of several things. We had a large amount of brush in some of the parks that would provide cover for people to actually camp on a public space, which is not an authorized use. So we've looked at that, both from an engineering standpoint to remove some of those things. But we also had holes in the camping ordinance that were allowing individuals to set up temporary residences on public space, which was, you know, there were loopholes in the existing ordinance, both with time as well as certain parts of city-owned property that were not covered. So parks were specifically mentioned, but city-owned properties like Makin Plaza and other areas weren't necessarily covered by the ordinance. And so this ordinance will cover some of those exceptional circumstances that were becoming commonplace.
What about the River Walk?
So that, that is also addressed in the new ordinance under city-owned property. So anything that is a city-owned property or currently designated park, would, this ordinance would now extend to, to that area.
Okay. Any questions from council? Councilmember Turner?
No, I have concerns about this ordinance. We don't have enough shelter beds for the number of homeless people we have here in Canyon City. And we know from the studies we've done that most of our homeless folks have a long-term relationship with Canyon City. So they're, they're locals. They're not folks who are just transient for the most part. And I wonder if this ordinance, where are folks supposed to go? Are we just pushing them out into the county? Are we transferring our problem from city limits out into the county?
So, in all honesty, it absolutely is already happening that some of the folks that we had in our point-in-time counts no longer within the city are actually moving to county areas along the riverfront and other places. So that's one of the conversations that we're having with the sheriff's office is to try and address some of these housing issues. And it's a larger conversation that we're having at the state as well. We're not the only community that's experiencing that, that housing shortage for those who are experiencing homelessness. So in effect, yes, we're trying to say you cannot stay in a public space. And most of the models that, and I just went or had a webinar discussion that there was 500 police chiefs part of, talking about homelessness across the nation. And one of the things that was pretty uniformly said is we cannot allow people to establish residency in a public space. But it absolutely is a need, to your point, that we do not have enough housing for those folks who are experiencing homelessness. That's, that's part of the reason why we have the coresponder program too, is as a locus point to say, and provide grant dollars that are coming from the state, that if somebody has a family member in Arizona or, you know, needs transportation, emergency clothing, those types of things to help keep them safe and get them to a place where they can live. That's, that's how we're trying to address that. But absolutely, this is going to prevent them from living in a public, a public space.
Councilman Meisner?
I know that there's a balance. I don't know that there is a balance, but I know that there's a relevance between available bed spaces and the issue with camping on public property. I think Colorado Springs has, has tried to address that issue and has not necessarily been real successful. I'm going to step out on a limb. And I think that their bed space, they have open bed space. They did last winter. They had open bed space, but were still experiencing problems with the homelessness. Again, I'm going to go back and reiterate that I, I think that there are three, in my mind, there are three types of individuals that are involved with that. Some that, that are there by circumstance that need and want help. Some that are there by circumstance that's, that may be dependents or medical-related, that need some help, that are very difficult to help. And then another group, they don't want help. They just want to be there. And I think most of our problems, I don't have facts to back this up. It's a personal opinion. I think most of our problems that we, that we see are with that third group, and it's not necessarily a third, that they just want to be on their own. They want to be free. And they don't want to have, to abide by any of the rules of society. And those people, I believe, are the ones that create a number of issues. And we need to start somewhere in terms of the fact of trying to address the problems that exist on public property that are, that are not available for benefit of the taxpayers of this community. And I don't like it, but I think this is a start.
Councilmember Hammack?
I have two questions. The, looking on page two, under cleanup of unauthorized camping sites, E, which is E3, says personal property will be stored in a secure location. Is that, is that intended to be the property room or some other location that perhaps is going to be developed? Or what, what will that secure location be?
So what we're, it would be on the police department property. And essentially, that transfer would go to a specialized Conex box, if you will. So it would be completely separate from evidentiary or found property. It would be stored for the time period allotted here. And it would be kept separate. So we're, we're in the process of cleaning that or preparing that space.
Thank you. The, my second question is, in the next paragraph four, the, the end of it, it says, "The city will not return items reasonably believed to be marijuana or other illicit substances." Is marijuana an illicit substance within our city?
So there is moratorium within the city. But I'm going to look at the city attorney on that. I believe we are more looking at kind of federal regulations concerning regulation of marijuana. There are clearly some state regulations as far as transference and licensure of dispensing marijuana products. But I would, I would ask for the city attorney's.
I would think if you're less than an ounce, is that not?
Yeah, less than an ounce is what you're.
I mean, if you got less than an ounce, I think you're going to have some problem with number four.
So the, well, back to Councilmember Hammack's question first. So the, it will be disposed of in the same way as the policy regarding illicit substances. So that's a term of, I guess, term of art better than anything used for substance. And that includes, you know, methamphetamine, heroin, cocaine, whatever. So that's what that reference is to. So to take Councilmember Meisner's point, it's, I don't know if I can, I guess I consider it illicit over that amount. I'm not sure I personally use that word. It's just not an amount you're allowed to have over an ounce, so.
Do we, does, does that mean we need a quantity attached with that?
We can put a quantity in there.
I, 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 I'm, look, I'm good with the way it is.
I'm not, I'm not sure the police department's going to be really comfortable handing back marijuana.
What choice do they have? I mean, what right do they have to take it?
Well, they were, it was cleaned up with everything in the cleanup. So everything's taken in the cleanup. They're not leaving the marijuana out at the park when they do the cleanup.
How's it any different than the guy's bicycle?
The only difference.
If it's less than an ounce.
Yeah, there's not a difference there as far as the actual seizure of it. Because all of that is lawful property. The question is really about the return. And so it falls kind of under the same guise as alcohol or tobacco or those types of products that we don't keep or store either. You know, whenever an individual is taken into custody for an arrest, let's say, and they're actually taken to jail, if they're in possession of alcoholic beverages or tobacco, those products are not brought into the jail. Now, there's some, obviously, other laws that specifically prohibit those items from being introduced into a jail facility, but they're not brought in as property. And so typically, those things are given to someone else.
If that's the intent, why don't you mention that specifically in four in terms of, say, an alcohol and tobacco? But you don't, you mentioned marijuana.
It's an oversight.
We can correct that.
I mean, if you, if you categorically come back and say alcohol, marijuana, tobacco, then I think we're talking about.
Which would be fine.
Yeah, it would make sense. But I think we're singling out marijuana here. So if we add in those items that you typically do not store, then I'm comfortable with that.
So make a note when you make a motion to have that amendment included.
The, the, let's discuss what that amendment might be a little bit. Because I think it needs to be, there needs to be some wiggle room there, some softness. Items such as, or something like that, so that there is, there is some judgment that's in, that can be involved, I think would be really great.
Okay.
So have Councilman or Councilperson Gonzalez?
Would that also include prescription drugs?
So those are lawfully able to be held. And so typically, no, we would take those and then release them back.
Are we okay hearing from the audience now?
Actually, Mayor Pro Tim, I have one other thing. In rereading the ordinance, I spoke with the city attorney just prior to this meeting. And so she had some proposed language changes for item E2. I had some concern about saying that if we have an imminent danger to loss of life, that we would provide a notice of cleanup no more than 24 hours. If we have something that's an imminent danger of loss of life or property, you know, technically, that's allowing the commission of a crime. Or, you know, and what's more concerning is if there's imminent loss of life, we don't have 24 hours. We need to respond as soon as we know about it.
Don't, don't we have a similar verbiage for when we're talking about, remember the, the dumping of property out in the, out of a rental unit? I shouldn't have said dumping. The, the placement of property out on public, rental property, on public property, we had a similar discussion that, an allowance, that if that was an imminent danger, it was removed immediately by city staff?
Yes, we do have that. So just to give a little bit of background. So as you may recall from the, the guidance that we give you on urban camping, the courts look favorably upon notice. So the more notice, the better. So I think what the chief's concern is, is, is that if it is truly an imminent danger, he wants to be able to go in without notice. And that section may not really clearly provide for that. And so I just drafted up some replacement language if council wants to entertain an amendment to that section.
I, I would like to hear that. But I would like to point out that the way this is written now, this is no more than 24 hours. So the notice is required to be given no more than 24 hours. In other words, from zero to 24 hours, you can give the notice.
Well, I understand that completely. I guess my concern is, is that if we believe there to be an imminent loss of life and we wait 18 hours, that then results in some loss of life, I'm concerned about that.
I understand. I, I understand that, that concern. What I'm pointing out is that you don't, you can, you can wait 10 seconds and give notice under this, under this language.
Right.
You agree?
I do.
Okay, Councilmember Hockes?
No, I'm okay with the suggestions that have been made, adding on what they've mentioned and stuff like that. The only thing is, I don't think you're going to have to worry about anybody that's confiscated their marijuana, their booze and all that other stuff coming to claim it within 30 days or any days, okay? They're just not going to do it. It'll just get disposed of the way it needs to be.
So could we hear from?
All right. Dee Dee, I think we're ready for you.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. So my name is Dee Dee Clement. I live at 911 Harrison Avenue here in Canyon City. I also serve as the executive director for Loaves and Fishes Ministries, which many of you already know is the only emergency shelter that we have here in Fremont County. And so I would like to just start off by first saying I truly appreciate the work you guys are doing to try to create an ordinance that meets the needs. I, I understand the difficulties that the city and the police chief is currently experiencing at the parks and that. So I appreciate the work that you guys are doing. I also understand the difficulty that you're having to go through as you figure out what is the right way of doing all this. I also know from the last time that this ordinance was read that this ordinance is designed to meet the immediate need and not necessarily the long-term need. And so this night, tonight, I'd like to talk a little bit about the long-term need. But I also want to talk a lot about the short-term, short-term need. So here's my concern. As we just shared earlier, Loaves and Fishes is the only emergency shelter that we have in our community. Our shelter is pretty much at 100% occupancy every single night. The Christ Episcopal Church last year was able to help us with them providing additional beds. However, as of last week, that stopped. So right now, there are no additional beds in our community except for Loaves and Fishes. We are only a 17-bed emergency shelter. So my concern is, is that people who are camping outside, if there are no spaces of bed available in our shelter, then potentially, they're going to be asked to move. And they may be asked to move a couple of times because I'm sure the sheriff's department is going to, or excuse me, the, the police department is going to work with them. And they don't want to write tickets and all that other kind of stuff. But at some point, there potentially will be a ticket. Or, but in the meantime, we're still asking people to move, to move, to move. And there is no place to move. So I thought a suggestion could be is, in other cities, I believe it's in Las Vegas, and I believe it's in Boise, the police department works with the emergency shelter. And what they do is, every night, the emergency shelter would contact the police department and say, "We have seven beds available." "We have five beds available." "We have whatever is available." So as the police department is going out and they're doing what they do in the evening, and they identify someone who's camping and needs a place to stay, potentially, that person could then be brought to our shelter. It's just a suggestion, instead of asking this person to move when there is no place for them to move. The other thing is, is that last year, the city council entertained the idea of providing funding to churches who would be willing to open their doors to provide additional beds for the winter season. I'm curious to see if the council would be willing to do that again. And if so, I think maybe Loaves and Fishes would be interested in offering additional beds, allowing people to stay on our dining room floor. Maybe that was something that could be offered. We need to have additional staff in order for us to do that. We currently only have one staff person who oversees our shelter from 4:00 PM to 8:00 AM. So in order for us to accommodate more people staying in our shelter, we would need to have additional funds to allow us to do that. The other thing I would just like to mention is, is our board of directors is seriously looking at increasing our shelter size. And we need help with that. We all know that homelessness is not a problem for one nonprofit to solve. And you guys know that, and you're not saying that in any way. And one of the things that we need to do, our first step, is for us to actually do like a feasibility study, where we're actually identifying how big of a shelter Loaves and Fishes needs. What we don't want is what happened in Colorado Springs. You're right, there's a, I think, a 400-bed shelter there in Colorado Springs that every night, they're having 100 and some beds that are, that are open, that people aren't using. Yes, we know that there are people on this, there are probably over 100 people on the street that could go in there, but for whatever reason, they're not. But that is something we do not want to happen here, right? We don't want to build a shelter bigger than what we really need. And so we need this feasibility study. And so my question to the council would be is, is, I don't know what the cost of that is, but maybe would you be willing to pay half? Maybe you'd be willing to pay a quarter of that? And we can talk about that at a later date. But just want to mention that to you while I'm up here. That's all I have.
Councilman Hammack?
Thank you. The, our, Dee Dee, are your workers designated human service outreach workers?
Are my workers designated human outreach workers?
Designated human service outreach workers.
Yeah, so, great question as far as the ordinance. So our community, except for what the Canyon City Police Department and Slavista Health is able to do, the, the coresponder that they have, we do not have any paid outreach workers in Fremont County, let alone Canyon City. There are volunteers, there are churches, there are individuals that are doing some outreach. But there is not a paid position, except for what Chief Harvey just mentioned, that's actually doing outreach. So that is a need in our community that needs to be addressed. And hopefully, the Built for Zero will be some of those things that we can build on, I'm hoping. So we'll see.
So, so the reason for my question is because this doesn't say they have to be paid.
Mm-hmm.
paid, just says they have to be designated, human service outreach worker, a designated human service outreach worker. And if the police could so designate your shelter operators, your shelter volunteers, then taking a person, if there's a bed available, that becomes an option for our police department, is what I'm thinking.
Well, then I guess in that example, we would be an outreach person to help the police department, yes. I guess in my mind, when I think of outreach, I think of someone that's literally going out on the streets and finding folks, so, so yes, in that, in that instance, yes.
And we don't, the, the ordinance doesn't speak to how designation happens, and so it could be a simple, a simple memo or memorandum of understanding, I believe. Would that be correct?
Well, I mean, I think it's really meant, and, and that the organization that's doing the human services or the mental health is the one designating. I, I don't know if Chief Harvey would agree with that or not, but they're the ones telling us, like, hey, if you need an emergency contact, you know, at night, call this person, or, you know, in the day, call this person. That they're telling us who the contact is, rather than us telling them who we think it should be.
Well, this, this, the, the, so I'm looking at D specifically.
Right, yep.
And it says, "The person may be in need of medical or human services," and it doesn't really say, you know, it's, it's, that's kind of vague. I mean, it doesn't really tell you for sure what agency you might be talking about.
Well, and it's meant to be that way, because depending on what the person needs, you may need to, you know, they may need a bed, or they may need mental health, or they may need actual medical treatment. So we wanted to make that vague.
And so that, that's my point, that if, if what they need is a bed, then a simple MOU between somebody, or just even a policy that says, you know, are, are Loaves and Fishes, if there's beds available, that's an option under this ordinance?
I don't know if you need an MOU, I mean, that's already taking place. What she needs is staff.
Right.
Oh, that, I, I understand that part of it, but I'm just talking about the, the legal mechanism here in our ordinance.
Right, yeah.
Do you have any comments to add, Chief Harvey?
Oh. So I guess really just kind of a question about the concern, because it is written very vague, because there are any number of services that the individual may require, from washing clothing, to medical needs, to behavioral health. And so leaving it that generic and vague, I'm trying to understand what we should classify there that will help alleviate your concern.
So I'm, I am just discussing the, the language. I don't know that, the, my question started off with, are Loaves and Fishes personnel designated human service outreach workers? They could be, and that, and if they could be, I'm good, I'm good then.
So, and I guess I would ask the city attorney, is that something that through a, a definition in the ordinance that basically specifies that anyone who would help in the furtherance of services for the police department can be designated as a human services worker?
Yeah, we can. I don't think we need to, though. I, I, you know, human services is a very broad thing, and it's meant to cover the gamut, and I don't think we need to define it. I mean, this is just meant to be a framework for contact and reaching out and, and, you know, bringing more people into the situation. It's not meant to restrict, oh, well, you're not a designated human services person, or that kind of thing.
And I'm great with that, and it's this, this discussion hopefully will help DeeDee and maybe the police chief understand that that is, that is the, at least my intent, is that it be vague so that when we do have an organization such as Loaves and Fishes, that the police can seek their help for, you know, overnight beds or something.
Absolutely.
Right, so it is vague intentionally, and Loaves and Fishes always will provide a bed if it can. But this, this have it duly noted, though, we do actually need an official paid position. For Fremont County, that is an outreach for homelessness. That's a, a really big key component to helping give the wraparound services to solving homelessness. That's just a side note for probably future conversations.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may, there are several grants, both at federal, state, and private level, that we may be able to explore to help offset some of those costs. Specifically, the Office of Behavioral Health, the grant contracting season comes up in February, and I've had several conversations about expanding our co-responder unit to specifically some of these positions like this that might be beneficial. And I guess what I would really try and staple with that is, you know, I'll still try and be fiscally responsible with the city's money and look for other sources of funding, but at some point, the funds are gonna run out, and we will have to look at how do we continue that program to, to meet these needs, and as a paid position to coordinate those areas, both for the police department, mental health, as well as social needs like Loaves and Fishes.
I'm also on a side note, Chief Harvey, is there gonna be representation tomorrow at the Built for Zero meeting at 1:30 from the police department?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. We do, Councilmember Hockes.
This is for DeeDee, please. Have you mentioned that at one time you had a church that was involved, and then they dropped out? The question I have to deal with that is, did you folks go and make, I guess I'll call it your pitch, with regards to all the churches in town to see what their response would be? Okay, so that, now, knowing that, it shows you, in my opinion, that there's really not much support from those folks that I think should be given support to causes like this. You know, now, now I'm gonna make, finish my statement, okay? And based on that, I think this ordinance deals with what we need to deal with at the present time. I'd hate to see us trying to get this ordinance hand-printed for each and individual thing that everybody thinks that should be in there. The other thing is this, and this is the final with regards to what you mentioned, I would like to see you go back, get with your board of directors, who you need to get to, and come up with how much you folks feel you can contribute to a feasibility study for what you're talking about, okay? Then, then you can come back, not only to us, but to other people, and say, "We're willing to put in this amount of money, now we're looking for help to get the rest of the amount of money." So say your feasibility study, you figured it's gonna cost $100,000, that's just a number, and you feel, your folks feel you can go ahead and put up, you know, $25,000. Now you've got a figure to work on to try to accomplish that feasibility study. Just to, I, I know we need a feasibility study, but you gotta have a starting point. And the starting point has to come, in a sense, from your organization, so that you can come back to city council to see whether or not we're able to help with funding. You can go to the county to see whether or not they're being able to help with funding, and now you can go and look at grants that may be out there to accomplish this goal. But that would be the starting point, is, is that. I'd like to see you go back to your board of directors and that, and then come back with a figure for us. I appreciate everything you're doing, but that would be a starting point as far as, you know, I'm concerned. But as far as this ordinance goes, I think it takes care of the necessary needs that we're looking for at this point. Grant you, it's gonna, gonna solve everything, but it's a starting point to work on down the road way. And that feasibility study with regards to creating more bed space and stuff like that can all tie into everything that we're trying to accomplish.
Okay, Councilmember Meisner.
Thanks, DeeDee. So, I concur with Frank, that last year I thought we made a really strong effort towards trying to get some faith-based organizations to assist in this problem, and for the most part, we didn't seem anybody willing to grab the bread and run with it, which is disappointing. But I, I think that if Loaves and Fishes can get something going there and, and get some groups that are interested in, in helping with that situation, then you need to present that information to the city. I personally, I'm kind of done, after four years, I'm kind of done with studies. And I realize you need to evaluate what it costs for additional bedding, beds, but I really get disappointed to find out we're spending 100, I'm throwing out a figure, $100,000 on a study, when a big portion of that money could actually be spent towards addressing the problem. I get really concerned about your concept of, you mentioned you're 100% full. If we weren't 100% full, then I fully would support the concept of, of having a liaison with the police department, and them knowing how many beds you have each night. But I really have a concern with the police department transporting those people and their property from wherever they're at to the shelter. That piece of the puzzle, I think we need to work out.
So, if I could just add a couple of things. So as far as our availability in our shelter, the plan would be, or my thought would be, is that we would notify them, let's say by 7:00 PM every night, that, so they know that there are five beds available. And so they're not transporting people, and then we're having to turn away the, turn them away at the door. The other thing I really want to mention is, the, the Christ Episcopal Church decided, or it wasn't their decision not to provide the space anymore, it was actually the, the police, excuse me, the fire department that said that they could no longer do this. And so it's, isn't so much that churches aren't wanting to do this, it's the way, I would say that, that police, or excuse me, the fire department is not allowing them to do it. And I'll leave it at that.
So, along those same lines, I know, Dolly, you have a comment. Okay, sorry. Because you have 17 beds, but you actually technically have more beds already at the shelter, but they, can you please explain why they can't be used right now?
Sure. So, there's a, a method that the fire department uses that says each person is required to have X amount of square feet. And the, the square feet goes from the floor to the ceiling. So even though we have bunk beds, that bunk bed is, only can be used, one bed can only be used because of the, the requirement of this floor-to-the-ceiling thing. And so a couple of years ago, three years ago, we actually had the fire department come, and they redid all of our shelters, areas to determine the, the bed size that we could have. And so that's where we came with our 17. We actually have, I think it's a 30, or actually, probably 28, no, I'm sorry, 34. If I take 17 times 2, that would be 34. We actually have the possibility of housing 34 people, but because of the requirements from the fire department, we're not able to. The fire department does work with us during the winter months, when it's cold weather, and obviously we don't want people to freeze to death, right? And so they allow us to put mats on our dining room floor, and people can stay there. And so, so that's great. But as I mentioned earlier, we just have one staff person that's already watching 17, and then if we add another 12, you know, that's what, that's 29. That's a lot of people for one person to be overseeing, so.
So I do want to say thank you, DeeDee, for coming with solutions and suggestions that we can work together on. And I guess my question to city council is, are you willing to, to further these conversations with Loaves and Fishes as far as maybe putting together some numbers for feasibility study, and numbers for staffing to have some more availability at Loaves and Fishes?
Well, I'm kind of like Frank. I mean, don't present me with ideas, give me an idea with an associated cost or number.
Yeah.
And then I can make a decision. But if you're just asking for me to participate in another study, I'm personally not interested.
No, I will do that. And just so you know, the feasibility study that we're looking at doing is only $10,000. It is not $100,000. It is significantly less than maybe some other feasibility studies that you guys have done. So, but we will put our numbers together, and we'll present them to you guys at a different date.
Okay, so if you, I just wanted to see if you, because that's such a lot of work to put together. Are you willing to sit down and, and talk about some of those numbers?
It's not gonna go away, but let's, we're digressing also.
Okay. I just wanted to say that, you know, this ordinance for camping, it's not going to solve homelessness. It's not. It's just one tool to address it, and it's one tool to address something that a lot of our citizens are really worried about. During the campaign, I would say homelessness was probably number one concern, and a very big concern of a lot of our citizens, especially in our public places, and their feeling of safety there. And so we do need to address it. It needs to come from all sides to do it. And it, it's multi-pronged, and we do need to sit down and have these additional conversations, so we can cover all of our bases to address homelessness. Veterans Park and Knight, and Knight Street does have some camping at it, and, and a lot of dangers. How many calls do we have a day, Chief Harvey, to these areas? And these are calls based on serious incidents often.
In, in the parks themselves, just the parks, not including like under the Knight Street Bridge and those areas and city-owned properties, we have roughly seven calls a day. You know, and so that, it's enough for a workload for an individual officer, really, and that's part of what the co-responder unit is trying to do, is to find out what those underlying issues are and prevent those calls from happening, but we still get them.
Yeah, so seven calls every single day of serio, often serious incidents that are happening. And that includes Knight Street Bridge. I don't know, there, there is an encampment down there. They're washing their laundry in the river, which is a whole nother subject of, of contamination. And, and we, and really the tool, too, is for some of these folks, and for some of them, it's to motivate them to start making changes in their lives. And that's where we're need to be ready to help them make those changes in their lives to, to do better. But I would like to see if this does pass, that we, we revisit in six months, too, and see, is this accomplishing what we need and what we want, and where do we need to go from here, too. And so, Chief Harvey, I'd like to see maybe some data collected as well, so we know a little bit more. Councilmember Turner has some comments?
Chief Harvey, so you mentioned you're getting about seven calls a day, and I wonder, what are people calling to report?
So it's, it's anything from safety, someone with a weapon, let's say, in the park, to washing underwear in the fountain, and vets park, to a fight, to, you know, individuals that are unresponsive and either passed out, or there's a concern for their safety or welfare. That, but I don't want us to focus specifically on those seven calls, because just like with other figures of crime, with target groups that don't necessarily have a strong relationship with the police, there's also an unreported amount of crime here, too. And so one of the things that we have heard on our point-in-time counts and other discussions with homeless folks, is that there are often a lot of unreported, more serious crime, you know, first-degree assaults, where somebody's seriously injured, there's rumors of sex assaults that are happening, that those things are going unreported because the individual has failed to appear a warrant, or some other issue where they're concerned about reporting it to the police and something that might fall back on them. Possession of a substance, the list goes on. So we are getting those seven calls, those are coming from citizens who are saying, "Well, there are issues. I'm, I don't feel safe in going in a public park." But there's also an unreported crime figure there that I don't have stats for, but we'll try and work on that as well.
Okay, so, I mean, that raises another issue, I guess, is, it sounds like what you're saying is maybe amongst the homeless population, there's crime that's occurring, but people don't feel safe reporting it?
Absolutely.
How does this ordinance address that problem?
It, it doesn't.
Okay.
But we were talking specifically about data collection and crime stats, and I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you that there is an amount of unreported crime if we're looking solely at statistics.
I mean, the reason I asked my original question is, I wonder if people are calling about actual crimes that are being committed, and we have ordinances already and statutes already to address known crime. And so I, my worry is that we're creating a new ordinance that's just going to tack additional problems on top of folks who are already facing a problem of homelessness.
Yeah, I definitely see your point, and further kind of creating a divide, I guess, would be the concern there. A lot of this is to address specific behaviors of folks who, we've tried to get them into the shelter, and specifically, they've had problems in the past where they were no longer allowed to come back to the shelter because they'd been violent in there. And those are the individuals kind of taking up residence in the park that are also causing fear of crime, that's generating these seven calls per day. So this expansion of the camping ordinance, because we currently have a prohibition, but there are some areas that are not addressed in the existing ordinance, this would encompass those, too, to again, force them to, to go to a legitimate area, and any housing...
Well, you say legitimate, what legitimate area?
So, the, the shelter itself, or Journey Home?
Which is, which is full.
Right, Journey Home is long-term.
I mean, we have, I, I think at last count, we had like 200 homeless people here, and we only have 17 beds.
Right.
I mean, I don't know...
Well, that's over the entire Fremont County.
Sure, but, I mean, where are they supposed to go? I just...
Yeah, and it's, it's not a solution that this is going to solve, but I also would be remiss if we don't also think about the general populace that also has concerns about fear of crime, of things happening in the park. So, you know, this... So, you know, this is not a fantasy, and I'm not purporting it as that. And this is not going to be a daily solution, because a tiered housing structure is what we need, Journey Home being the last step towards independence for folks that are appropriate in the shelter or nightly shelters. We also have things with the coresponder unit where we actually have, in sort of solvista, the ability to be able to purchase a hotel room for somebody. If we have a below, 10-below-zero night, and we find somebody, we have the ability to be able to purchase a hotel room to keep that individual safe if they're not appropriate or the shelter is full. So, it's a longer-term question, but this definitely addresses some of the issues that I know I've been getting at the police department of individuals staying in the band shelter, for example, and the urine and feces and those types of things that are being left in the band shelter that the Parks Department is having to clean up. Those things have got to be addressed. I'm not negating your concern at all, because it is absolutely an issue that if we're going to solve it, we didn't arrest our way out of, you know, the war on drugs, we're not going to arrest our way out of this either. But we need to address that there are certain types of behaviors that are inappropriate and push them towards and expand these other housing options that we're talking about.
Sure, I guess my concern is that we're starting with the stick instead of the possibility of a bed at night. So, the place we're starting is punishing folks for being homeless.
No, we're not punishing them for being homeless, we're punishing for criminal behavior when that happens.
No, this ordinance is not about criminal behavior. The ordinance is about camping in public areas. That's homelessness. It's not a crime to be homeless.
Right.
And that's not what this ordinance is addressing. The ordinance is not addressing specific crimes that are occurring in the park. I have no problem with that, and I've addressed that when we've discussed this topic before, is we have ordinances and statutes that already prohibit the crimes that are occurring in the park. So, but homelessness on its own is not a crime.
Well, a lot of the behaviors that are happening with the long-term stays at the park are associated with some of these incidents that are hap... These aren't fear of crimes, there's actually crimes that are happening at Veterans Park. It's not just feces and urine, there's turf wars over this is my band shell and not yours. And there are incidences of weapons. We have citizens that are valid in having their concerns of fear of being able to use their public park as well. We have been talking about long-term solutions with those in fishes for over a year now, and we need to step them up, obviously, and we're doing a number of things to do it. It's multi-pronged, and I feel like there needs, for those who are camping out there, there needs to be a motivation for them to make newer steps in their lives to be better, and this is an opportunity to help them. We're not just going to be kicking them down the road. We do have comments from Councilmember Hawkes.
Mayor, members of council, I wish to make a motion that we pass ordinance number 25, series 219, as amended.
Is there a second?
I'll second that if I can give it a suggested amendment.
Yes, you may.
I would suggest that if you look on item number four, the second sentence that reads, "The city will not return items reasonably believed to be marijuana," that we would strike the words "reasonably believed to be marijuana" and replace those with words such as tobacco, alcohol, marijuana, comma, or products containing marijuana, blah, blah, blah. So essentially, we would read, "The city will not return items such as tobacco, alcohol, marijuana, or products containing marijuana, and will dispose of such products in accordance with policies."
Can I clarify that amendment? I know.
I guess.
I know. So, in the products section, so products containing, I would suggest adding out tobacco and alcohol to that list as well as marijuana.
Oh, makes sense.
So, Frank's motion wasn't seconded, is this a...
So I'm...
No, well, didn't you have corrections on E2 as well? Yeah, Chief Harvey had suggested language for item subsection two as well.
I'm sorry, I misinterpreted his motion.
Well, he motioned to approve as amended, because it was amended on first reading. You seconded that motion, but you wanted to make a friendly amendment?
Yes.
So we're working through that friendly amendment right now.
I don't have a problem with what you want to do either.
So, it would read, "The city will not return items such as tobacco, alcohol, marijuana, or products containing tobacco, alcohol, marijuana, and will dispose of such blah, blah, blah."
And Councilmember Hawkes?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So as an outstanding discussion item, we had subsection two right above that, that Chief Harvey wanted to perhaps suggest some language that I have written for you.
But I thought we came to the conclusion that it didn't need to be adjusted, because we have the...
We didn't hear what she...
Yeah, let's hear what she has suggested.
So here's the suggested amendment, "The city may take immediate action to clean up without notice, but under..." Oh, sorry, so this is just, let me read the whole sentence, sorry. "In the event of an existence of a condition imposing an imminent danger or damage or injury to or loss of life, limb, property, or health, the city may take immediate action to clean up without notice, but under no circumstances may clean up under this section. May a cleanup under this section occur more than 24 hours after the discovery of the site by law enforcement."
That's much better than I would have done.
That's fine.
Okay, so Frank, under your motion, are you okay with those amendments added to your motion?
Yes, I am.
Is there a second?
Second.
A call to vote, please.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
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 Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Nay.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye. We'll now move to agenda item number 13, the second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance 26, series of 2019. This ordinance repeals and reenacts section 1.16.050 of the municipal code concerning useful public service. Assistant Administrator?
Mayor Protim, members of council, the current court system does not allow for sentencing of useful public service. This amendment would allow the court system to assign useful public service in place or in addition to, for misdemeanor and other petty offenses.
Is there any discussion on this?
Discussion?
Discussion or comment? Councilmember Meisner?
Mayor, council, or Mayor Protim and council, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance 26, series 2019.
Second.
Call for a vote?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Temporary absence.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye. We're now on to the second reading and adoption of ordinance 27, series of 2019, amending title 17 of the municipal code by adding the addition of a new chapter 17.18 concerning riverfront zoning.
Mayor and members of council, this is the second reading. We have not received any additional public comments regarding the creation of new zoning language for the riverfronts, and I would leave it to council to discuss and hopefully pass the second reading.
Councilmembers, any discussion or movement?
Where's the... Mayor Protim?
Yes.
The, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance 27, series 2019.
Second.
Call to vote?
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye. We're now on item number 15, the second reading and adoption of ordinance 28, series of 2019, amending section 17.24.050 of the municipal code by the addition of a new subsection 101 permitting the use of the property located at Lot 2 Red Hawk Landing Minor Subdivision in Canyon City as a location for a recreational park.
And again, this is second reading for Red Hawk Landing. We did have one comment from local residents, we did answer their questions, otherwise they would have been here tonight. We have not received any other public comments regarding this application.
And I did receive an email this afternoon from that party saying that they are satisfied with the information and gave a hearty thanks to the staff for reaching out and contacting them and alleviating their concerns and their hoped-to-be-good neighbors with the new Red Hawk Landing. Councilmember Hawkes, did you have something?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, we approve on second reading ordinance number 28, series of 2019.
They're second by Councilmember Meisner, call to vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor, or Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Okay, agenda item number 16, this is a...
Excuse me, parliamentary inquiry.
Sure.
Do we have, do we have a method for Councilwoman Gonzalez to record her votes on 14 and 15?
No.
No, no, okay, thank you.
So number 16 is the introduction and first reading for ordinance 29, series of 2019. This is an ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Colorado appropriating sums of money to various funds and spending agencies in amounts and for the purpose as set forth below for the City of Canyon City, Colorado for the 2020 budget year.
Tammy, do you want to come up and introduce, please?
While she's coming up, I think there is a process there, it would be recalling that vote, but it's not worth it.
I'm not aware of that process, but if you think there's one, I'm willing to follow.
Rules of Roberts, or whatever it's called.
Roberts rules, yes.
Before you, you have the ordinance 29, series 2019. This is the ordinance that is appropriating the sums of money from the, basically formalizing what we've done in the resolution. The resolution adopts the budget, this actually appropriates it, so then after the first of the year, we can actually spend the funds.
Any questions or discussion from councilmembers? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we pass on first reading, ordinance number 29, series of 219.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Good job, Mayor Protim.
And a call to vote?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
We're now, agenda item number 17, introduction and first reading by title only, ordinance 30, series of 2019, amending certain water rate schedules set forth in the city's water code relative to water service provided by the Canyon City Water Department, Water Activity Enterprise. So I think we'll invite both Tammy and Bob to come up for this one.
The ordinance that you have presented, we, is to increase the water rates effective January 1st, 2020. You do have two options presented. The first option is a 9% increase, and then the second option is a 3% increase. Both ordinances are presented.
Bob, do you have any comments you want to add?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protim. Good evening, councilmembers, staff. The ordinance that Finance Director Nordike is referring to, as far as the 9% one, is just kind of a follow-up on our water rate study that we did in 2017. Out of that water rate study, it was recommended to increase water rates by 9% for five consecutive years to be able to build up a cash reserve in order to fund capital projects. In your budget packet, I believe you're probably seeing a revenue, total revenues of $7,010,000. Is that correct?
Sure.
At that, with that type of level of revenue, as was commented on before, when you look at our revenues over expenses, we're about $582,000 in the red by the end of 2020. Of course, that gets a little deeper when you also take into account other financing sources, which mainly the big one is the operational transfer between the water fund to the general fund, which then leaves us a total deficiency of about $895,000, almost So to put that in perspective, a 3% rate increase would generate, if you're looking at that budget statement, in 2019, the revenue was estimated to be at $6,709,100. Increasing that by 3% would take it to $6,916,200. And so that would bring your total revenue line item up to $7,211,800. So then when you look at revenues over expenses, instead of being about $582,000 in the red, we're about $381,000. And then, of course, adding in the additional expenditure of the operational transfer and taking into account some transfers into the water fund, that drops us down to about $694,000 in the red. So looking at the 9% rate increase, your operating revenue would increase then from an estimated $6.7 million approximately to $7,319,100, making the total revenue line item at $7,614,700. So then when you subtract the expenditures from the revenue, we're about $21,000 in the black. But again, still taking into account those transfers between the two funds, we still wind up the year about $291,000 in the red, which would be covered by the reserves. This still only takes into account $1 million in capital projects, basically for, that's got to help out with our 2A projects, our CMAC project for 2020, and yeah, the 2A monies. So, you know, we, there was monies that we were not able to, or contract, were not able to purchase or award in years past, because again, not having the revenue in the water fund to keep up with the 2-way street fund. So it's really imperative that we, you know, take an approach to where we can at least keep up to some degree with 2A, without having to, like I said, I've got other parts of the system that could really use some work, parts that really will never get touched by 2A. So it's a little bit of a dilemma, and that's the best information we have for you tonight. I know there's a concern, I mean, it's, I've looked at the numbers these last 10 years, and I mean, finance has been right about 50% of the time on the projected revenues. And of course, one of the biggest drivers with that is our precipitation. For example, this year, we had a very wet May, and it kind of set the stage for lower demand. Lower demand translates into lower... Lower demand translates into lower revenue, of course. The years where the target objective of the revenue was exceeded was in the dry years when, you know, the water from Mother Nature wasn't near as plentiful. So it, it's really a, a best educated guess on where to set these revenues at, but we do know that, we do have expenditures that need to be covered in the future and unfortunately, you know, it takes rate increases to accomplish that.
Councilman Meisner.
So, what was the rate increase that we settled on for 2019?
3%, I believe. Oh, 2%, 2%, 2%. The first year in 2018, we did do the 9% adjustment and then we followed that up last, or for this year with the 2% instead of the 9.
If I recall, not blaming here, but if, if I recall the budget hearings last year, there was no suggested rate increase. That 2% came at one of these budget sessions where I and some other council people said, we need to do something, at least a cost of living increase.
Yeah, and that's why we're presenting two options here to you today.
Yeah, I was not really privy to discussions last year as to why 2% was chosen.
I think it was just a cost of living.
Well, again, the, but the issue is, again, you know, the, the consultant's report, which, you know, we all agreed to was the best way to try to address the capital needs, recommended a 9% and we only did 2.
I don't know that we all agreed to it, but, but at least we reviewed the results of that study.
Fair enough.
Right, yes, I agree with that statement. Councilman Hammack.
So the bill that we, the ordinance that we just passed, number 29, has the water fund at 7.593 million dollars expenditures, the transfer out of 394 for a total appropriation of 7, 987. Does, are these increases in either of those numbers?
They're not. We, we budgeted without any increases, knowing that we had to have the rate discussion first. So at second reading, we'd bring back the adjusted based on councils, what council decides.
What would change, what would change if the use of the reserves, the expenditures would stay the same, they would not increase?
Got you, but the, but the, the transfers out would go down if we approved increases?
No. No, transfers wouldn't change.
Transfers would stay the same, it would be the, you'd see a reduction in-
Reserves.
Yeah, well, the reserves would be higher than-
Yeah, reserves would increase, the use of the reserves would decrease.
Right, use would decrease, thank you.
Any other comments from council members? Well, I, I think it's important that we each say where your comfort level is or suggestion for water rates. Councilman Meisner.
Well, I'm not in favor of any water rate increase, but the reality of the situation is, we got a system that we've got to take care of and we either pay it now or pay it tomorrow and I guarantee you, it's going to happen, just like it happened at 10th and- 10th and Oak. 10th and Oak and some other situations. That system will not sustain itself mechanically, we have to replace it. And I, you know, I, I don't like it, but the 9% was based upon some projections in terms of what it was believed it would cost to sustain that system over the five-year period. And I don't like a 9% increase and I realize there's individuals within the city that would have a difficulty with that, with that $3 and, or what's it, $11? $3 a month. $3 a month or $36 annually, I realize that for some individuals, that's a burden. But at the same point in time, I ask those people to realize, I, I think that the water department is, is doing a good job of their expenses. I think sometimes we blame, don't take this wrong, that we blame some issues on the 2A plan, but the 2A plan is nothing more than causing us to upgrade certain parts of the system, maybe ahead of what we would like to do. But the reality is, is we got to put money in this to get it done and I would recommend it, so councils seriously consider the 9% for the 2020 budget.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
So, Bob, how much did that incident at 10th and Oak probably cost us?
Uh, we gave a presentation the other night on that, it was right at $23,800 when you take into account the leak repair and the asphalt restoration. What that does not include would be the permit fees and the street damage restoration fee, which that was probably pretty minimal considering I think that street is in dire need of recon.
Bob, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Did that also include the million gallons that we lost?
No.
No, it does not include the price.
How many gallons?
A million.
About a million.
A million gallons.
So then the year before that, we had a water main break.
By Safeway, I mean by-
City Market.
Yeah, that was, that was an eight-inch cast iron water main that-
And how much do you think that one cost? Well, you probably know how much that one cost.
Yeah, right off the top of my head, I'd have to go back and look at the numbers, but that one was closer to like maybe 8,000. When you take into account the, the length of the repair and the restoration of the surface.
So with this 9% increase, that would help maintain some of those, some, some of those, what do you call it?
Problem areas?
Yeah, problem areas or, or places that, that could be-
It, it, it would, it would be a start to getting towards that. Again, some of those areas, I mean, you know, I mean, for example, I know this year, we finally replaced the water main in Meadows Avenue, the 1000 block especially. We'd been up there probably six, eight times fixing that water main and, and that, and that does impact your streets as well. I mean, that, that street was nothing but pretty much alligator and it's in dire need of recon as well. The, the additional revenue increases will, like I say, be a start towards hopefully building, I mean, a reserve. I mean, it's not going to get it done in 2020 by any means. You know, if we would have been able, if we would have stayed on track, as far as in 2018, we did 9% for 2019, we do 9% and when we're talking about the 2020 budget doing 9%, we may have started to see a little bit of savings as far as building up that reserve to do these projects. But again, missing out on this year, we're now still playing catch-up. Again, we're still going to finish about $200,000 in the red even with this rate increase as long as the revenues and the expenditure projections hold out, which I think, at least on the expenditure side, shouldn't be too much of an issue. You know, hope for a drier year so that a little bit more water's used.
I mean, I know- In some senses.
Yeah.
But, okay.
Councilmember Hammack.
The, I would just point out that really, the 2A is not causing us to increase our expenditures in the water department, or the reason that 2A is, is because streets were neglected so long in the, in the community and we're trying, and we're paying the, the price for that right now.
Yeah, I would say it's more of a timing issue. I mean, last month at the General Government Committee, we presented a presentation where, had a long list, laundry list, so to speak, of things that needed done and those things needed done regardless of whether or not we had 2A or not. Again, I think 2A has kind of brought it to the forefront and just the timing of it now. Whereas, you know, in years past, we could maybe instead of spending a million dollars, got by with, you know, $500,000.
Sorry, I would disagree with that. I would say that because we didn't spend the money in the past, we're forced to spend money now and raise rates now.
Oh, yeah.
Really, really my point.
Yep.
Yes, Ryan Stevens.
As Bob alluded to earlier, I also want to mention that the water fund is an enterprise fund and we do have commitments outside the city limits and with the 2A, you know, we, we are, you know, we're, we're not spending as much time replacing some of the infrastructure outside the city limits because we are chasing some of those 2A projects.
Should we go around to councils and just get a tally of which, 2%, 3% versus 9%? We can start at-
Why don't we just do a motion for one of them?
Well, we'd have, wouldn't we, oh yeah, let's do one or the other.
It'll help us know which motion to go for.
Mr., Mayor Protim and council, I move that we adopt whatever the motion is, or the-
Ordinance.
Ordinance, I'll find it.
30.
Ordinance-
Ordinance 30 of 2019 for the 9% increase in water rates.
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion?
Very good.
I think the only comment I have is that it's a common theme, it seems to be during our tenure, our city council is trying to catch up from long years of neglect of not addressing some of the basic needs that government supplies and clean water is one of the most important ones we can give to our citizens.
Yeah, and, and we're not alone in this endeavor. I mean, there are many municipalities, municipal water providers who are, are in this same situation. Again, with, as you well know, with streets, with water, with stormwater, these kind of, this kind of infrastructure is, is very expensive and it, it's just going to do nothing but of course, get more expensive in the future. And so the more proactive we can be in trying to at least stay on the curve or a little bit ahead of the curve will be beneficial for us.
Okay, Councilman, Member Meisner.
I just want to, I'm going to say remind or ask future councils that if you'd looked at any of the political discussions that happened with people that served on council over the past years, part of their reasoning was is that it was difficult, given the economy, to ask the, to ask the citizens to pay more or to pay higher in water rates. We're currently in a good economic swing, I, I think we need to take advantage of that. We don't know what's going to happen over the next couple of years and if things turn somewhat south, there's going to be a tendency with the council next year to not want to increase those rates, knowing that, the impact that it's going to have on individuals. But I ask those future councils to understand, pay me now or pay me later, particularly with these problems, unfortunately.
And, and I realize any increase is tough on, you know, a certain percentage of our citizens, but you know, again, you know, we want to ensure that they're going to have safe, clean drinking water and, you know, not have it interrupted by, you know, periodic water main breaks on, so.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
I've said it once, I've said it twice, I've said it, I don't know how many times, but our water is some of the best drinking water that I've ever tasted. So to me, $3.08 extra a month is better than having to pay Arrowhead Water to bring water to my home to drink, so that's just my opinion.
Any more discussion? Then I'll call vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Hammack.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith.
Aye. Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you, Tammy as well.
Thanks, Tammy.
We are on agenda item 18, introduction and first reading by title only, ordinance 32, series of 2019. This is amending sections 3.12.030. Do I have to read all these, Catherine?
No. Actually, Catherine just noted something, or staff's going to ask the council table this. We noticed that it does amend title 17 and that should go through planning commission first.
Do I have an emotion to table?
I move we table this discussion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Call to vote.
Can I ask a quick question?
You can absolutely ask a quick question.
Oh, come on. Wow. Really? So, on the mi, concerning the, the minor operated businesses, this is just a question I've always wondered, do they have to pay taxes on their sales?
Well, so that's what, that's what Senate Bill 103 is, is trying to address. There's always been this issue about whether the lemonade stand needs a permit, needs a sales tax license and communities have been very reluctant to try to, you know, go up to the nine-year-old and say, you need a sales tax license. So Senate Bill 103, which this is based on and in reaction to prohibits the licensing or permitting of minor operated businesses, includes sales tax. So they would not need a sales tax as long as they fall within the parameters in the ordinance.
That was my question, okay. Sorry, Mr. Meisner.
I had that same question, it was a good question.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Now we will call to vote, please.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith.
Aye. Okay, so the, we are needing to call an executive session.
Mayor, council, I move that we have an, that, I move that council hold an executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations and or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024E. Second.
Call to vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Reluctantly, I'm tired, but I want to go home.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
I'm with Mr. Hockes.
Nay. Count, uh, Mayor Protim Smith.
Aye.